Janelle, are you ready? The Columbus City Council meeting for February 1st, 2021 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley?
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Hemmer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Treisha?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets were clear, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting anyone in our audience would like to address the council, we'd ask you please come forward, give your name, address, and we'd ask that you try to limit your comments to five minutes or less. I'd like to just point out if you think things are a little different tonight, we're having some internet problems, so we're kind of working the old-fashioned way with paper. We are able to put the agenda on the screen so you can follow along with us, but we are not able to use our computers as of right now. All right, we'll start with the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the January 18th, 2021 city council meeting. Item 4B, resolution number R21-10, amending the bylaws of the Board of Park Commissioners to change the meeting dates from the 3rd Tuesday of the month to the 1st Tuesday of the month. Item 4C, resolution number R21-11, approving the use of Pawnee Park to camp overnight on Friday, June 11th and Saturday, June 12th, 2021 for the annual antique tractor and gas engine show. Item 4D, resolution number R21-12, approving the Highland Park Church Second Edition vinyl plot redevelopment agreement and bringing portions of said addition into the corporate limits. Item 4E, resolution number R21-13, amending the personnel manual with regard to holiday pay, compassionate leave, and accrual of vacation and sick time. Item 4F, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mary, I move that the items presented in the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Aye.
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 Supposed to be a roll call.
Oh, okay.
Is the attorney good with, I mean?
Are you okay with her all aye?
No.
For the other items?
For the other items, okay.
Yeah, that was a unanimous vote. Motion passes. Special presentations.
Item 6A, annual report of the library board and community building project update.
Hello, I'm Karen Connell. I'm the library director. Okay, so we'll start with the annual report. October 2019 through March 15th, 2020 was the start of a typical fiscal year for the Columbus Public Library. As usual, the library was a bustling place hosting weekly and monthly programs for all ages. The library then followed the lead of local schools and closed to the public on March 16th, 2020 in response to COVID-19. Our services during COVID-19 shutdown included access to reading material and information via our digital library resources, phone and email assistance for digital library access and reference questions, a print and mail service for patrons who needed the library's computer lab for printing documents, and contact-free curbside service was launched April 9th. That was used 662 times in May and June. The city of Columbus offered a grocery order and delivery program through Columbus Hy-Vee during April, May, and June. Library staff assisted employees from other city departments with placing and delivering orders. The library building reopened June 22nd with limited hours and services, which continue to fluctuate based on local health guidelines and the statewide directive health measures. Before closing, the library in response to COVID-19, the library engaged with the community to relaunch a project to build a new library and community building. This project, of course, expanded into that community building as we conducted surveys. After a successful educational campaign, voters approved issuing bonds for the community building on November 3rd, 2020. Rural Platte County residents voted to end library and bookmobile services to rural residents. Further details of the results of this election and the consequences thereof will be reported in next year's summary as it falls in the 2020-2021 fiscal year. So overall, the library had a positive impact this year in the lives of our community members. Countless library patrons expressed their gratitude when curbside service began and when the library building opened so they could once again access entertainment and educational resources. This year had its difficulties, of course, but we were glad to be a part of making it a little bit more bearable for our community. Whether it was finding the perfect books and movies to entertain the kids so mom and dad could work at home or bringing joy to someone's lonely summer without their grandchildren, the library continued to serve the community in quiet impactful ways. Those moments fulfill our mission to connect people with ideas, something we did every day, and we thank Columbus for another fantastic year. So let's take a look at the statistics for this fiscal year. And Janelle, that's that PDF that you had open earlier. Sorry about that. Okay, so starting at the top with finances, shown here are the actual monies received and expended. The city of Columbus spent $1,070,000 to provide library services to the community from October 1st of 2019 to September 30th of 2020. Platte County spent just under $122,000. Their contract with the city for the 2019-2020 fiscal year is for $150,000, but since their fiscal year is different than ours, the numbers don't quite line up for this report. They did pay a large amount in the fall, and that will show up on next year's annual report. Looking at the expenditures, they're down over $145,000 from the previous year, mostly due to furloughing seven of our part-time library staff while the library was closed during April, May, and June. We purchased about the same amount of materials as the previous year, although this year more was spent acquiring digital library materials than before. You can see a breakdown of expenditures for the library collection in that materials expenditures graph in the center of the page. So next, let's look at the circulating collection. That's the green section on the bottom right. These are the numbers of items available for checkout in various formats. On the bookshelf graphic, you can see that on September 30th, 2020, when we do all these counts, we held 54,000 print books, 2,400 audiobooks, and 6,000 DVDs. The collection of eBooks and e-audiobooks grew significantly due to a migration of materials from one company to another. RB Digital, which held a lot of our e-materials, was purchased by Overdrive, which is actually our main eBook platform. So the items we owned in a shared collection were now counted towards our holdings as an individual collection. On the bottom left of this page, I have listed various items in our special collections. The majority of these items are used in the library building. Some of them are part of the Makerspace, such as the laser engraver, the 3D printer, embroidery machine, vinyl cutter, and poster printer. On the next page, the use of library services is detailed. Checkout of materials is only one part of library services. Those numbers are in pie graphs at the top of the page, showing a total of over 146,000 checkouts. Physical materials are still used more than electronic, but that number did increase this year by about 10,000 checkouts, mostly when the building was closed and people were using our online materials. In the middle of the page on the right, a stack of books displays the use of interlibrary loan. That's a program where libraries share materials with each other for our patrons to check out. So our patrons borrowed 827 items from other libraries, and we loaned 585 items to other libraries for their patrons to use. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic, all the statistics in the bottom-left box labeled "facility" and the bottom-right section for library programs are less than last year. However, we are thankful that our library has been able to serve the community much more than others. In some cities, the public libraries are still closed, whereas we've been able to be open since the end of June and even offer limited programming while still following those recommended health measures. So thank you for your continued support of your public library. Any questions about the annual report? Yeah?
When does the bookmobile end for the county?
So right now, the contract will expire on June 30th.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so Mayor Bulkeley asked me to also present a progress update regarding the community building project. So right now, BVH Architecture is working on the city hall program. That's determining how many square feet are needed, the number of offices and adjacencies of departments or even employees within departments. They are also working on the library program with the help of Margaret Sullivan Studios. That's a library design firm. And adjacencies of the various entities and components in the whole building. The next steps will be reviewing potential changes to floorplan adjacencies, and when we get to the stage of more detailed design, different stakeholder groups, like the Arts Council, will be brought in. Boyd Jones Construction is working with them along the way to establish costs and make sure we stick to that budget that we've set. The Library Foundation is also at work. They're helping out with that project budget, starting again with their fundraising. They're contacting donors right now who were interested in giving prior to the failed 2017 bond vote. Those donors wanted to wait until public funding was secured, so now that it has been, meetings are being set up and just to get them up to date on the project and discuss their donation. There's about 10 local businesses on that list and 10 Nebraska or Midwest foundations that typically give to these sorts of projects. So far, the Library Foundation has raised just about $5 million. So with those 20 potential donors, I have no doubt they'll raise an additional $3 million by the summer of 2023. And those 10 local businesses are ones that specifically expressed interest last time around. So there's definitely more that can be reached out to if we need to. In regards to the library, following your approval of the bid from Boyd Jones Construction this evening, work will begin tomorrow to make all the necessary changes we need to in this building so it can function as a library, replacing torn carpet, adding smoke detectors, lighted exit signs, and an additional source of egress are a few of those safety updates that are needed. The work should take no more than four weeks, so we're planning for Friday, February 26th, to be our last day open in the current building. The next day, following the vehicle auction, we will auction furniture and fixtures that we won't be using in this temporary library or storing for use in the new library. So then, two weeks after that, that'd be March 1st through the 12th, we'll be moving furniture, supplies, shelving, and books to this temporary library. Bond rental movers has been hired to move the shelves and the books and any furniture and boxes that we don't end up moving ourselves. Then on Monday, March 15th, we plan to open to the public in the temporary library building. At that time, we hope to return to our pre-COVID open hours since this building should require fewer staff to keep an eye on the various areas than our current building. And being a smaller space, fewer patrons will be able to come at any given time, so more open hours will allow people to space out their visits. The library will offer most of the same services as we do now, just in a different way. In the temporary building, patrons will be able to access materials for checkout, read magazines and newspapers, use the public computers and Makerspace equipment, and attend programs. Some of the library collection will be housed in the partial basement here where our staff can retrieve items for those patrons, similar to how we did curbside service in the spring when the library building was closed. Programs will be held here in council chambers and in the conference room behind me, as well as off-site. For example, we have a music program scheduled in March, and it will be held at the Friedhoff Building. And our summer programs for children and families are planned to be held at Frankfurt Square. So it's a busy and exciting time for the library. Lots going on. Any questions about that part, the update? Okay.
Very much, Karen. Keep up the good work, and we got lots of things happening with our library over the next couple of months.
Yes, we do.
And I think the public, one comment the public would notice if they're downtown is the parking lot to, just to the west of us here, straight south of the library. The south half of it as of now is partitioned off and closed for the construction. And at some point, two weeks, three weeks later, or maybe? Okay. Somewhere in the near future, the whole parking lot will be closed, and it will be a staging area for construction of the new library and the demolition of the old library. Probably the way we're doing it gives people a chance to recognize and get used to, hey, we're not going to have this parking lot for a while. You know, it's some of that short-term pain for the long-term gain. And we're going to have to, we've got to live with that to get what we want to get.
Yep, we keep telling ourselves, only two years, only two years, we can do it, so.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Item 6B, presentation from Public Works Director on snow removal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chuck Slibis, City of Columbus, Director of Public Works. We're just going to go over the snow plowing procedures. We've had some changes, and I'll just go over real quick. The first thing I do want to say is all this information is available on the city website, columbusnebraska.com. You go down and scroll through, you go to Street Department, or go to Public Works, then go to and scroll down to Street Department, and then this information's under "snow plowing," it'll pop up. So basically, you know, it's our priority to get the snow moved within 12 to 24 hours of the event. We start, you know, prior to the snow, depending on the forecast, we may pre-treat with de-icing agents if needed. If there's not going to be no rain or freezing rain prior to that, that always helps to pre-treat, so that's part of the process. Once we do have a snowy event over two inches, we'll dispatch the crews out, and they'll do the thoroughfares, collector streets. Emergency routes are given first priority. Crews then proceed into the residential areas, then call to sacks, and then alleys. Alleys are usually the last to be done. If you want to go to the next page. First slide. This is basic, just question and answers, and I'll go through just a few of them, but here again, all this is available on the city website. There's some good information on there. Here again, it's just when does the crew start plowing. Basically, two to six inches, the crews will be out. Normally, prior to two inches is just pre-treatment, things of that nature. Two inches is where we dispatch all the crews to go out in full force normally. There again, depends on weather conditions, wind, things of that nature. It's all pretty much basic, you know, the forecast and timing of the events, a lot of it. All right. So I think for the most part, our biggest is going to be the snow routes we've increased. But, so I'm going to get into the snow emergency. What's a snow emergency? When the mayor or the public works director declares an emergency, it simply means vehicles may not be parked on streets where you see emergency snow routes. We have all those established now. All the signs are posted. We have a list on the website. We have an interactive map, and we'll see that here a little later in the slides. But the basic thought processes behind this, we went from two streets prior to this to, we got several streets, several avenues now. If we declare a snow emergency, no vehicles would be parked on that street. We have the ability to tow immediately. That gives us another tool in the toolbox if needed. A lot of these streets are already non, you know, no parking, our main thoroughfares and everything, so it looks overwhelming at first when you look at the map, when you see all the red lines. But the thought was that in a snow event, it's really heavy, hard snow, a lot of snow, eight inches or more, heavy winds, ice, rain, things of that nature, we will, you have to travel maybe three to four blocks in either direction to get to a plowed street that will try to keep open through that whole event. All right, next slide. This just kind of establishes what I just said, that, you know, the mayor or the director, we can call the emergency snow route. And the list, you'll see the list, you'll see the map, but we can declare any street. We can declare downtown, no parking. We can declare, you know, that's kind of at our given needs that, you know, we have some things in writing, but some of it will be just announced. And, you know, depends what's going on, or, you know, if there's other underlying issues that we need to address, we can, you know, it's just, you can't say that, well, eight streets are snow route. Well, yeah, it is, but we could add 6th, 7th, and 9th if we had to or we needed to. So on this one here, it's just you've got 24 hours within the snowy event to clean sidewalks and things of that nature. This next slide will be the list. This will just be the basic list we'll work of. These are the designated snow routes that when we have to announce this, this will be part of the announcement or part of the paper notice, or our online notice, or any of our webpages. This will be the notice. And you can see here, we went from two streets, basically, to 24 streets and 20 avenues that are now declared and marked as snow routes. So on this next slide, you'll see, this is the interactive page where you go on here and you could click on any of them red lines, just going to tell you what that street is. So up north, that's 38th Street. You'll see 48th Avenue. But that way, it's a little easier to see because the map was kind of small. We can't get a huge big map on the internet to, on our webpages, so that's how we addressed it. So all those red marks are designated snow routes. So, and you see when we get down south, 11th Street's still on there, 9th Street, 10th Street. But not knowing, you know, the construction and the completion and how the flow would go with the new VIDOC and everything, that's why we put those in there, just so we'd get them posted, they're in there.
Chuck, you mentioned a lot about snow emergency. When was the last snow emergency in the city of Columbus?
We declared one last year, I think, and then it scared it away. We never had the snow. So it works really well. It's a good tool to have. We hope it works that way every time. But, you know, this last eight-inch one, the timing of it, you know, we were on the fence. If the winds would have been heavier, and, you know, then they dropped it down to five, then they went back up to eight to 12, and it kind of bounced around. But, you know, we watched four or five different weather stations, and it's a hard game to play. But timing's a lot of it, so, you know, they said it was going to stop around nine or 10, and it did. So we figured, well, we're going to do downtown, and then we'll get in the residential area. It worked fairly well, except we had some breakdowns. We had some unavailability of the bigger trucks to haul, so that's why some of the windrows were downtown the next following day. But that's just, you know, we worked through it and tried to get through it, so. But, and then this last page is just, if you have a hydrant on your block or on your corner, just the common courtesy for the fire department to scoop it out and clean it if it's buried so they can see it and it's visible. We like to see that done. We used to have the scouts do it. Once in a while, they'll go through and pick them up and stuff. But, you know, like I says, everything, I went through it really quick, tried to keep it short. All the information is on the website. You know, anybody has questions, they can call, and we can try to get you the answers.
On those main thoroughfares, how often do you go up and down those?
As needed. They, you know, some of the main roads through town, they were on them three or four times in a day. You know, they'll just.
And on my street, it was like four or five times that they come by.
And it depends, you know, this time with the school being canceled, you know, we watch at that too. That's a big part of it. If there's no school, that kind of makes things a little easier for the crews too, that, you know, we don't have to get in them areas right away and make all those roads passable to schools. So that's all part of that big picture.
Chuck, some of the new construction roads are, are, there some of those that we don't treat because of new construction?
We.
And if so, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we, do we list that on the website?
We could put them on there. They're not on there now, but they're marked on the streets themselves. And we did put a list out on our, one of our webpages. But we can put some brine, we just can't put the full strength on them. But it's kind of up to the contractor, because they got a warranty that worked for a year. But the contractors we've had have been pretty easy to work with and stuff on the VIDOCs and things of those nature. We, if we have to, we can put the sand, gravel mixture, no salt, but we can use some brine treatments on them.
So two questions, Chuck. The 24-hour rule applies to sidewalks all over town.
That's correct.
Correct? So residential business, any sidewalk in the city
That is correct.
should try to get cleaned after 24 hours.
24 hours after the end of the event.
And that is, you know, that's a common question we get every year from people. So we really need our residents and our businesses to recognize the fact that after a major snow, you know, yeah, the streets are getting clean, but then we need some help getting the sidewalks clean. Especially, you know, you've got kids going to school, you've got people that, you know, traverse these sidewalks on a regular basis. So that's one thing I think it's important to get out, to recognize, we have to, we have to get that done. We've really never made an effort to seriously enforce that, and I don't think that's something we want to do, but it's certainly possible that it could happen if we get into one of those really snowy years and people aren't obeying, and, you know, not trying to step forward and do what needs to be done.
Yeah, because if you're a property owner and you've got a sidewalk adjacent to your property, on your property, that's the responsibility is you as a property owner to clear it or make a path through it within that 24-hour time.
Now then, that leads me into the age-old question, and you knew it was coming. I can tell by your snicker. So why do you, why do you put snow back on my sidewalk after I cleared it?
We don't, we don't put snow on your sidewalk intentionally. We don't single people out. In some cases, and that practice of being sidewalks right along the curb in some areas, John, in your area, that's not a practice anymore. There's a setback. But, you know, we have one, most of our equipments are one-way plows, and that says it's just exactly what it is, one-way. We can only go one way, and that's to the curb. And there's really no logical or tool out there that makes fiscal sense for municipality. You know, they've got these blades that drop down on them and hold them off the street. But, you know, when you've got a house or driveway every 60 feet, it's just not practical. It slows your machine down, and you have issues getting stuck. And, you know, we try, we can control some of it. You know, we know there's a sidewalk there. We'll try to gear it down and go slow. We don't go out there purposely to plug people's driveways or plow their sidewalks closed. It's just, it's the nature of the beast. It's, we have really no choice. I wish there was an answer, and I had a couple of people up in my office with it, but, you know. But, you know, after talking to them, explaining how it works, there's, you know, there's, we just, you know, to get through the town on the timeline we want to do, and what people expect, we can't, we can't just stop and, you know, clean driveways and do that. So, I mean, I, I got the same problem. I come into work, go out, come home, and scoop mine before I leave. I come home, and there's another pile in my driveway. Go to work the next day, they're making their second round, and guess what, there's another pile.
Well, they got your address in the truck, and they just got to keep that there.
It might be intentional in my driveway, I don't know, it seems awful deep, but I hope not.
Well, I, we all know that is a common question. Everyone in this room has either gotten, or, or has heard somebody bring up. And I think it's important that we hear from you, that, you know, how impractical it is. And I think it's upon us to try to let the citizens know, yeah, hey, we don't do that intentionally, and we're sorry, but it happens to us, it happens to everybody. So, I mean, it is part of winter in Nebraska, and we just have to accept that and move on. Any other questions for Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Chuck, I talked to a blade the other, not the other day, some time ago, and the fellow who was running it said something that was logical to me, but maybe you can tell me is it logical, or to throw cold water on it. He said, if the, if the grader doesn't go at a certain speed, the snow will not roll off the blade.
That is correct.
It just goes in front of it.
That is correct, you got, you lose your momentum, you got, it's got to roll off to the side, or else it piles up in front of the machine, and then you're, you're stuck.
Therein lies all of the sidewalks and driveways that you throw snow on. Just nature of the beast.
And if you look at a snowplow, you'll see the angle of it, and that's, you know, that angle's, that's the premium angle to move the most snow that they can with that machine, and that's how they're set up.
Any other questions?
Chuck, and vehicles should be moved within 24 hours?
No, vehicles should be moved within 12 hours of the windrow being put around them. And then typically, you know, you got your 24 hours, you got your 12 hours. If we get around to 24 hours, and the police department, they'll contact us, make sure we've made our rounds, if we've been through the whole town, and work with us. But typically, it's 12 hours after that windrow is around your vehicle, it should be moved.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Chuck, thank you very much. I will say, I think we did a great job on this last snowfall, so please let the fellows know that.
It's went fairly well, and we've had, I think this time, we actually had more comments than complaints, so. That was good to hear, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing, consider objections to the creation of the street improvement district number 185, East 14th Avenue from 23rd Street to North Corporate Limits, and the street improvement district number 186, the alley between 15th and 14th Streets, and 28th and 29th Avenues.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here this evening to speak for this public hearing? Please come forward.
My name is Scott Schaper, and I live at 28 19 15th Street. And, I share the alley with the Columbus Medical Center, which is the alley that they're considering to pave. And I just want to encourage the city to do it, because that is probably, I haven't done any studies or anything like that, but it is probably the busiest alley in the entire city. I mean, that Columbus Medical Center, there's 50 cars going through that alley every single day. It's just, it's absolutely amazing. I know they did a count on it here, last year sometime, they put a thing across the alley. I don't know what the count was, I'm sure you guys do. But, they're constantly grading it, so that would, you know, go into effect as far as the price, I'd imagine, but.
Well, on this, we're talking about East 14th right now, or are we talking about the, we're talking about both? And, and we do move on and recommend that it be done, and so I think the, the postcard survey was all positive in wanting it to be done, so we.
Great.
We're, we're making a recommendation at the next, the next step or two. You're getting ahead of yourself, but we're glad to hear your, we're glad to hear your support.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I'm against the, uh.
Okay, please come forward. Yes.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, please name and address, please.
My name is Maria Pedroza, I'm on the 14, on the 28 14th Street. So, I have a couple of questions. So they sent a map saying they will be make three roads. I want to know why they have to make three roads when we didn't need it, we didn't have schools around, we didn't have hospitals, we didn't have clinics, we don't have nothing else, except just houses. So just I want to know why they want to be on three. I have to pay like around 20,000. So that's why I'm, I'm here for about, I'm against that.
Rick, do you want to answer? I mean, I can give a brief, but you're probably better at it. Because there, there is a reason why it's a three-lane, ma'am, so I'll let our city engineer try to give you his best explanation as he can.
So, Rick Bogus, city engineer. So, East 14th Avenue is a designated arterial roadway. And so, what we do when we have arterial roadways with the counts of traffics and the trucks that we have, is we make those three-lane roads, and so it's two, it's one lane each direction with a common left-hand turn lane. And so this is the same one you've seen constructed on Third Avenue, South 8th Street, 33rd Avenue by the school, that sort of thing, so it's the same design pattern.
So, so it's designated this type of road because of traffic counts, because of, of the type of traffic on it? I mean, I want to try to help her understand what's making this all happen.
Yeah, that's correct, and it's a state designation, so the state designates it that, and then of course, we follow that designation, but that's correct, because of the traffic counts, truck counts, things of that nature.
Okay.
Type of traffic too.
Type of traffic, trucks, yeah.
The, because of its designation, it then becomes also available for some different funding, does it not?
It does, and there are using that too, federal funds purchase program money. And so 80% of the cost of the entire project is paid to this, this FFPP fund. And so 20% of the project is being assessed to the property owners. And the reason we do that is, you know, it's not necessarily fair for them to live on the, the street and pay for the wider three-lane road, pay for the thicker concrete because of the additional traffic and all that. So, us paying 80% of it, and them paying 20% of it, is a, is a large deduction under what it would be if it was just a standard road, about maybe three times less.
So if this was in town, a, a standard road in town, what they end up paying with the appropriate percentage that you've laid out there, it would be similar in cost, or close?
Yes.
Close?
Yep.
Now smile, you're on candid camera, so everybody, that's why we have to have you come up here.
How about, yes, they do two roads, we didn't mind, we just pay few, but it's like 20,000 I have to pay. So it's like, if they do just two roads, like whatever we have right now, so we can pay less, and we can do that. But otherwise, it's a lot of money I have to take out of my pocket and then pay a loan.
Well, and I think what Rick's trying to explain is that the two-lane that you're talking about is really about what you're probably paying for, what, what you're being assessed for is going to be, is really the same, but you're going to get the three lanes.
So otherwise, the other people just living around, can they be helping us to pay there?
It is getting, the, the cost of this road does get allocated all the way up it, and then back in on the streets that come into it, one or two lots in each way? There, there is a formula, ma'am, to address exactly what you're asking.
Yeah, it's standard half-block back.
Standard half-block back. And that again, is to try to offset those costs for you on the frontage, and recognize that others are sharing in that benefit. So, there's many of them that would come forward and say, well, I'm back here and not getting it. But, you know, what you're trying to do is spread that cost to those that are trying, that are getting the benefit out of it. Understand exactly where you're coming from, but there, it, it, there's not anything we can do about that, you know? Well, there.
Yeah, so 80% of it's paid, so, but the assessments can be paid over a 15-year period if you want to. And so you can spread those costs out over a 15-year period with interest.
So it's a, it, it would be like a loan to us that you could spread out over 15 years?
Right, so the city would pay for it all, and then the property owners get assessed according, you could pay up to 15 years, right?
So actually, we have to pay extra a loan after that 16 or 20,000 we have to pay?
Yeah, the city sets a interest rate when they set as the board of equalization, which will be another year or two, but there's an interest rate with that.
Okay. Are you, are you, you have any other questions? I mean, certainly want to try to answer anything we can, because your, your questions are very valid and very common. Please understand, what you're asking are very common questions.
Yeah, we want to know about everything, what's going on, so that's why I'm just saying, we don't have schools, we don't have hospitals, we don't have nothing, like exactly, we have to have three roads. So we didn't stack cars between, so that's why my concern was, so.
But it, it has been designated that by the state, and, and keep in mind, your part of the city is really starting to grow.
Yeah.
So it's also part of the, you know, trying to plan toward the future for, for the community.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else to speak toward this, for or against this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, recommend the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Aye.
Oh, hell, we can't do that. Heck, we can't do that, can we?
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr? Hemer? Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7A1, resolution number R21-14, directing the city to proceed with the creation of street improvement district number 185.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R21-14B adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-14, any discussion? Seeing none, vote.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item 7A2, resolution number R21-15, directing the city to proceed with the creation of street improvement district number 186.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R21-22. R21-15. 15, I take that back, 15. Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-15, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify with a roll call.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item 7B, public hearing authorization of acquisition of various interests in real estate for lift station number seven.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close this public hearing. I would just like to ask, where, what address is lift station seven? It's the one on.
Applebee's.
Right along the highway.
Yep.
Okay. I've got a question, something I would like to see on these in the future would be a current close address.
Sure.
I just think, I just think when you go through and look at it, and you, I mean, I thought that's where it was, but wasn't sure, and I really don't know where Block 1, Block A, yada, 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 yada is.
Descriptions, yes, I understand.
Anyway, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, vote please, or vote please.
Jablonsky? Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item 7B1, resolution number R21-16, authorizing acquisition of interests in various tracts of real estate by purchase or eminent domain for lift station number seven.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of resolution 2118.
2116.
16. It's not mine, I'm sorry.
So this is Charlie's, yep.
I'm off.
It's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R21-16.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve resolution R21-16, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Yes.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item 7B2, resolution number R21-17, approving purchase agreement with Mountain Tower and Land LLC for real property for lift station number seven.
Mayor, I recommend resolution number R21-17 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 21, R21-17. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Lor?
Yes.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carried.
Item 7B3, resolution number R21-18, approving the purchase, the purchase agreement, excuse me, with H Properties of Columbus LLC for real property for lift station number seven.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R2118 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R21-18, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Brings us up to reports of city offices. We have, in your packet was a memo from the police chief indicating we had one, they had one call since our last council meeting. Anyone care to have the chief detail that, or is everybody comfortable with that summary?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, thank you for putting it together, chief. We also had a report from city, our city physician, Kip Anderson, on the status of COVID in, in Columbus. Would you want me to read that, Tara, just to let the public know?
If you wish, or if the council.
Is everybody comfortable with Dr. Anderson's summary to us?
Was there something in there about the percentage of inoculations made?
Only said that vaccines are continuing to be administered in the Phase 1B, which includes over 75 or 65 with significant health problems. Yes, sir.
Taylor Anderson, 3653, 36th Avenue. I'm just curious, so where are we at with, compared to that, I think 50 cases per week rolling average?
I should have read it, because then that would have told you. Why don't I just read what Dr. Anderson put together for us? As of January 28th, COVID hospital numbers have remained low with an average of one to two patients in the hospital, and currently, no COVID patients in the ICU. As of the most recent report from East Central Health District on January 22nd, the rolling seven-day average for Platte County is 31.1 per 100,000, which is where it had been for the, approximately the same place for the last month or so. Vaccines continue to be administered, which I had just said, which includes those over 75 or 65 with significant health problems. Everyone alright with that? Okay, we'll move on to reports on legislation.
Item 12A, request that city council express support for legislative bill 579 that would change provisions relating to the Department of Transportation reports regarding highway construction and state intent regarding appropriations, and legislative bill 542 that would authorize the issuance of highway bonds under the Nebraska Highway Bond Act.
Thank you, so the point here, for everyone's knowledge, is that our Senator, Senator Mosher has put together a bill 579 and had it introduced. 579, in a nutshell, would, is asking for $75 million from the general fund.
70.
70 million? 70 million from the general fund to get transferred into the roads and NDOTs in anticipation of federal money getting paid back to NDOT from all that they spent for flood repair, from damages. And the thought is, hey, if they get that money upfront, maybe we can finish Highway 30, maybe we can, because all the delays we're constantly given is based on lack of current funding. So this would be a way to try to get some current funding, and not really long-term affect the budget, because it's going to get paid back in, sorry, is.[1797.54]
Correct.
Okay, and then the, the bill from, from Senator White's, from Walt's, from Fremont.
Falls is five forty-two, right? And, um, that bill is, would basically allow DOT to bond highway, uh, projects. And there's, um, multitude of arguments, but as I wrote in the memo, um, borrowing money right now is in just record lows. And, um, the primary argument for the legislature, as far as I've heard when talking to people, is that it's actually cheaper to bond it now and pay for it and start it now with today's construction costs than to wait five to ten years. And the escalation in construction costs far exceeds the cost of financing currently, if that makes sense.
So our, our intent is to send those senators a, a letter of support so that the legislature will see that we are behind them in these kind of efforts.
John, did you have a question?
The, uh, the governor has historically been against bonding for highway purposes.
Correct.
Has he changed his position any?
No.
No.
And that's why the senators really, they know that they can't beat his veto.
Yep, they want to make some noise about the highway issues and the delays that continue to happen. And they want to show that there's solutions that the state could be pursuing.
And ironically, although the governor is not for bonding, bonding was used for the, the Lincoln bypass, which is under construction right now. So there, I'm not sure what that says.
Well, that said that the, the contractor was taking the, the hit on the, on the cost and hoping that the bond would pay out, other than the state having to pay it back. So that, it's a little bit different, but it's still a creative way to do it. I mean, it's still the same end result. But we, we do need to do something. And I think the fear with Highway thirty is that they were just going to grade and then stop because that's how much money they had. And then that would mean that whatever they've done up to North Bend could possibly sit vacant for six years. And that is, doesn't make sense. That does not make sense. And that highway keeps getting more and more dangerous every day. And, and so any input you can give to the senators, uh, to, to get that seventy million dollars off the ground would be appreciated.
All right. New business.
Um, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to support this.
To direct staff to.
To, right, I can read it. A motion to direct staff to send communication to the Appropriations Committee to express support for LB five seventy-nine and to the Revenue Committee to express support of LB five forty-two.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Schilling?
Yes.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Yes.
Roth?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
New business.
Item thirteen A, quote from Warren Garage Door Incorporated in the amount of fourteen thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents to replace overhead door at the transfer station. Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from Warren Garage Door, Inc. be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Warren Garage Door. Any discussion?
I just.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. What justify the twelve thousand dollar difference between the two bids?
Chuck, I'll call Chuck up for that question.
Yeah, I had a question raised also. Uh, why, what is the reason for replacing it? What is, what has caused the need?
Chuck Sullivan, City of Columbus Director of Public Works. Door number five had failed, pulled apart and was collapsing. That's why it was emergency repair. We didn't have a line item budgeted for the repair at this time. I'll just, uh, briefly, overhead door has a, these type of doors have a lifespan eight to twelve years. But we're at the seven-year market, it's starting to fail. Once we started looking at replacement, we always try to get quotes and look into it. Well, this door was an insulated door, twenty-eight foot tall. They don't even recommend replacing it as an insulated door at this time. So the first quote we had was thirty-eight thousand dollars. That kind of set us back in our seats. Well, let's look at some different items here. So if you're familiar with the transfer station, that area is not even heated. Doesn't make much sense to have an insulated door there. And that's part of the problem with this big a door, the insulated door is so heavy, the way it's constructed, they're kind of hinged together as it rolls up, the hinges start pulling apart because you have the weight of the insulation, you got the wind load, you got icing, things of that nature. And they're open, you know, every day, six days a week, twice a day. So they were starting to pull apart. So what we did with that, we, we salvaged parts off the number five door and fixed number four because it was starting to do the same thing. And we had to replace number five at this time, which is a non-insulated door. The price difference, we just, you know, we called, we worked with Warren Door before in Norfolk, and that's the difference we seen. The insulated door originally was thirty-eight thousand, then their second bid was twenty-eight. And then we come down, the non-insulated door was fourteen from Warren Door. And, um, you've seen the price for the, twenty-eight for the other, twenty-six, twenty-eight for the other, non-insulated from overhead. So we opt to go with Warren Door. And I think the preceding year, next budget, we'll probably look to replace the rest of the doors, so.
This is something that, uh, the design process went, went, went bad.
Yeah.
Whoever, whoever designed, whoever designed a building put, put insulated doors on a, on a non-insulated building, you know?
Once we started looking into it, uh, we had some questions. But, and now, you know, that we get the door for this kind, it doesn't make sense to come in and lower the door, make it a twenty-foot door and lose that eight foot and try to get something better. But, uh, the insulated doors, we don't see a need for it. It's not an insulated building.
Apparently, uh, the warranty is over on the door.
Yeah, commercial doors, most projects we do typically, Rick can ver, we get a year warranty on most, any kind of project that we do. Sometimes we'll get lucky and get a two-year extended warranty on some things, but typically it's a year on any of that.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Uh, let's vote.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item thirteen B, quote from electric pump in the amount of seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for lift station pump, view control system for wastewater collection. Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from electric pump be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from electric pump. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item thirteen C, quote from Corin Maine in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and one dollars and eighty cents for year one of five-year upgrade program of the fixed space meter reading monitoring system for the Water Utility Division.
Mr. Mayor, move that the quote from Corin Maine be adopted?
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Corin Maine. Any discussion?
I have a question. So that one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, is that for just one year or is that for the, all five years?
That's for one year.
So next year we'll be paying another amount, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, please vote.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item thirteen D, purchase and installation of VRX repeaters from Electronic Engineering in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents to equip three police vehicles.
Mayor, I move to approve that, uh, Electronic Engineering amount, the amount of seventeen thousand, five seventy-eight and forty-seven cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of RVX repeaters from Electronic Engineering. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item thirteen E, planned specifications, estimate of cost in the amount of three million, six hundred and four thousand dollars for authorization to advertise for bids for street improvement district numbers one eighty-five, East Fourteenth Avenue from Twenty-Third Street to North Corporate City Limits. SID one eighty-six, the alley between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Streets and Twenty-Eighth and Twenty-Ninth Avenue and SID one eighty-seven, uh, Twenty-Fifth Street from Thirty-Third Avenue from west one hundred and forty feet. Plans and specifications are on file in the Engineering Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the planned specification and estimate of the cost for the bids for the street improvement districts one eighty-five and one eighty-six be approved.
And one eighty-seven.
I'm sorry, one eighty-seven, be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the plans, specifications and estimated costs for districts one eighty-five, one eighty-six and one eighty-seven. Any discussion? I wanted to just make a public note of some of the comments that were put out in the, uh, in the, uh, memo from staff because it's the type of thing that will come back to us after construction, after a rain, because this is an area that's very flat, like most of Columbus. But it is spelled out in the details that the design of the project is limited due to elevation of discharged storm waters. The street paving and storm sewers will be constructed at the least slope allowed by the city. Therefore, it must be noted that some small areas of shallow storm water ponding may occur in the gutter line and ditches along Highway thirty. In other words, there's going to be some pooling of water once in a while because we live in a flat community. You can't grade flat. It is what it is, but I think we need, it's important we say that upfront because it's always, those are the kind of comments that always come back to us on why didn't we design it right? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Yes.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item thirteen F, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members with comments this evening?
I have two, if I may, please.
Yes, please.
Uh, the first one was, uh, the first one I'd like to make is I had a concerned citizen contact me last week. One of our, one of our vets who are retired, um, expressing some concern about, uh, people using the handicap parking. And, uh, just a reminder to citizens that, uh, those are, even though they're empty sometimes, or they appear to be there, that, they may appear that they're not being used, they are being used. So please show some common courtesy to our, um, disabled vets, to any of our other disabled citizens by choosing not to use the handicap parking if you are not handicapped. Uh, the second one that I'd like to point out is, uh, we are beginning this week, the Celebration for Catholic Schools Week in Columbus. And I think Columbus is pretty fortunate. We have an outstanding public education system as well as an outstanding private education available to people in our community. And, uh, while our parochial schools are always a choice, we are very fortunate that we have families that make that choice. Uh, just a brief calculation here, it costs almost ten thousand dollars to educate one person in the public school system. We presently have eight hundred and fifty people, eight hundred and fifty students enrolled in our Catholic school system, which means that we are presently saving over eight million dollars in property taxes because families are choosing to send their kids to a parochial school. And that number would be higher since we don't have the number of Lutheran school kids or the Christian school kids. But our, our parochial school system is a benefit to all of us in this community. They help keep our property taxes down and they still contribute to a strong education system in our community. So I commend families for making those sacrifices to any of our parochial schools. And I just thank all of our schools for the work they do and the dedication they have to our, the kids in this community. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Any other comments? I have nothing this evening. We'll move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R two one dash one nine, amending the schedule of fees to accommodate operations associated with the permitting software.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R two one dash one nine. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-one nineteen. Any discussion? Please vote.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hemer? Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item fourteen B, resolution number R two one dash two zero, approving amendment B to the standard agreement and general conditions between owner and the construction manager for the community building project for the temporary library relocation.
I move that resolution number R twenty-one dash twenty be adopted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two one dash two zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Item fourteen C, resolution number R two one dash two one, approving the agreement with Columbus Community Hospital, Inc. for ambulance services.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R twenty-one dash twenty-one be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R two one dash two one. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I under, I've read most of it and, and understand there is a need for it. Uh, I, we charge for these and we won't be reimbursed?
Yes, we'll be charging for them.
So what happens in the event?
That they don't pay?
Well, no, not the, not necessarily them, uh, if the hospital needs them moved and they don't have insurance or, or the hospital need, won't provide a, uh, medical necessity for them to transfer?
The agreement says that if we collect after ninety days where it's uncollectible, we'll bill the hospital.
Okay. I didn't, didn't catch that, thank you. That's what I was after.
And I think for the public standpoint, it was very clear that this only works when it does not affect any need for the.
Right.
You know, for rescue to be handling any current, any city obligation. This only is done when the department is comfortable they can do it.
Right, and maintain coverage for the community.
Yep.
Is this short-term, till they get ambulance service?
Well, it's intended to be short-term, yes. So hopefully they'll find alternatives. Well, it's intended to be short-term, yes. So hopefully they'll find alternatives.
I mean, it's probably not a best situation, but I think it's a great, uh, it's a great collaboration when.
Yeah.
When we get into a situation where we're not really, they, they don't have somebody to turn to, and if we can help them out and, and get our costs covered, you know, and, and help, I, I mean, that's probably what it's all about, trying to help and, and serve the citizens. Chief, are we missing something that you wanna?
Dan Miller, Fire Chief. Um, they do have, uh, a new contract, uh, private ambulance service in town that they are contracting with, but this, uh, situation arose out of the pandemic, and the need to create empty hospital beds, uh, in a situation that would benefit the community and allow us to bring people to the hospital again, because they had no empty beds, and we didn't want to end up with, uh, in LA where, uh, ambulance is waiting outside for hours on end for empty beds. So, uh, it, it also raised the awareness that maybe we need something like this a little bit ongoing, even though they have a new contractor. What if their ambulances break down, or some other situation like this arises in the future? We've got this little card in the back pocket. And they do have to call me, call me first, call the Fire Chief first, get authorization, make sure that that ambulance company's not available during daytime hours. We call off-duty primarily volunteers who need a little extra experience with the EMT, uh, duties, gives them a little experience as well to go handle it, so.
Great. Thank you, Chief. We have a motion and a second to approve R twenty-one dash twenty-one. Please vote.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling? Oh, yeah, I said that, sorry.
Pass nine to nothing.
Motion carries.
Item fourteen D, resolution number R two one dash two two, approving permanent drainage agreement agreement with Brad S. Luxinger, Christine C. Lushinger, and Todd A. Lushinger for street improvement district number one eighty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R two one dash two two.
Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R twenty-one dash twenty-two. Any discussion? Please vote.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
All voted aye, motion carries.
Brings us up to ordinances on their third reading.
Item seventeen A, ordinance number two one dash zero four, amending multiple sections of chapter thirty-three of title three of the Columbus City Code to update and make organizational changes for the Fire Department.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two one dash zero four.
Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two one dash zero four. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Barr?
Yes.
Hemer?
Aye.
Jablonsky?
Aye.
Creshaw?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Roth?
Aye.
Schilling?
Aye.
Augustine Schulte?
Aye.
Barr? Or, or, I guess, stop there again. All voted aye, motion carries.
Meeting adjourned.
We do have a CDA meeting, too.
Oh, that's right, we do have a meeting after this.
Don't leave just yet.
So the city council.